And welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of October 10th, 2023. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heikala?
I am here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item one, approval of the City Council Study Session Minutes of February 2, 2023, March 21, 2023, City Council Conference Minutes of June 27, 2023, and July 11, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Almost cast your vote. Now you...
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, now it's time for council announcements. We'll start with Ward Eight.
No announcements for Ward Eight.
All right, I want to make sure everybody knows that this Thursday at 2:30 PM at the new City of Norman Transit Center, we'll be having the ribbon cutting for that facility on Thursday at 2:30, and then on Monday, it will go into operation along with the new bus routes throughout the city again on Monday. That will be starting. And so, everybody's encouraged, if you're interested, to come out on Thursday and see the new transit hub that we'll have in downtown Norman. Then, also, Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting for this month on October 26th, the fourth Thursday of every month, we get a transit ridership report from city staff, and we discuss any of the new projects going on. We'll be discussing the route changes every month and how well they are working, or if there's any issues we're seeing with them. And in that committee is an opportunity for the public, if you have concerns or questions about the bus system, if you are a rider and you have concerns or questions about the changes to the routes, please contact any of us, any of us on council. You can contact me directly as the Chair of the Committee, and we'll make sure that that is addressed with city staff, and if changes are necessary, we can make those. So definitely tune into that again on the 26th of this month and the fourth Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. It's also livestreamed on the City YouTube channel. But again, we get the monthly report on transit ridership, and we discuss road construction projects and all of those things, if those are of interest to you. Also, I would encourage everybody to check out the aimnorman.com website. That is the area where we're trying to gather feedback on how the Norman Comprehensive Plan will be developed. So that's an opportunity for all of the public in Norman to participate in making sure that your questions, your opinions, suggestions about future growth in Norman are taken into account. So aimnorman.com, they've got survey questions up on there, and they will be attending, will be having booths at various events in Norman, including the Second Friday Art Walk this week in downtown. So, other than that, I do want to extend a thank you to the Police Department and all the other entities involved with hosting National Night Out at the mall last week. It was really neat, there were lots of really, really great stuff there to look at and experience. I am looking forward to finding some way where we can have that event at the mall and also have the neighborhood block parties like we used to do. That was always really neat to travel around the city and visit all the different neighborhoods and talk to, talk to people where they're at about what's going on in the neighborhood. I think the event at the mall was really great, too, having it all in one spot and having all the stuff there. So if we can find a way where we're able to pull off both, I think that would be really, really good for Norman in the future. And so, it's always a great event, and I encourage everybody to attend that, participate in it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
So backwards. Okay, so happy voting day, City of Norman. Hopefully you all voted today. We voted on some bridges, some bonds for that, so 20 minutes left to go vote, so hopefully you did that. To piggyback off of Councilmember Holman talking about the AIM Norman, I had my meeting with the consultants today, and one thing that I did ask of them is to come up with a Plan A and a Plan B, if we have a turnpike or we don't have a turnpike. So getting your feedback and figuring out what Norman would look like if we have it or we don't, because we don't know yet, but we need input for both. So please do that, and we'll be encouraging you all to do that. Received a lot of communication about the SROs here in Norman and that meeting and the whole situation, and so I just wanted Ward Six to know that I have a meeting, my group meeting is October 17th. I won't be here in Norman for it, I'll be zooming in, but we'll be furthering that communication. So don't think that we've pressed pause, we haven't stopped funding it, we're not supportive of it, we're just going to have a conversation and then it'll come right back to us. So just so you know, Ward Six, my meeting with them is coming up. Big Trash Day is on October 21st, so put all your goodies out the day or two before. I actually have a lot of stuff that I think I might post into the Ward Six group, because I'd hate just to think it goes throwing away. So share what you got, put it out there, let's try to repurpose everything. Then, this weekend, I level up to my next decade. I know you're probably thinking, oh, she's going to be 30, and that's very, very sweet of you, but I'm actually going to be 40, so I leave at 5:00 AM to go have an existential crisis with some family and friends, so I will be kind of off the radar a little bit, so if you reach out to me. Not going to be so communicative, and I won't be here next Tuesday, so, all right, that's all I got.
Councilmember?
Yes, I've received a lot of, a lot of feedback and a lot of comments, calls, emails regarding freedom of speech and the discussions that took place last week on miscellaneous comments and permitting the public to come up and express their views and opinions with regard to the city and its business. I received a letter from Cindy Tuchillo, Ward Five, that expresses, "It is with concern that I respond to the complexities of freedom of speech. This right is/was never meant to overthrow basic decency and respect. With that said, we the people do have the right to speak, and it is a privilege to do so in the open forum portion of our City Council meetings. A privilege can be lost. We the people would be at a great loss if not allowed these few minutes to speak our thoughts before our city's governing board. It takes a lot of courage and fortitude to stand up before the cameras and speak, in some cases plead, to be heard, especially when you know the majority don't agree with your point of view. I know it may be uncomfortable for the council to hear differing opinions, but not hearing them is not a solution either. Please don't limit our voices, and please do keep us accountable to speak with decorum and decency. Anger and rage must be kept in check for all parties. The City Council is elected, and that means they're a public servant. I know the hours of work is relentless..." Lost my place. "...and the compensation is zero, but they all knew that when running..." So this is not an excuse for shutting down. "I value all of your time and dedication, but you must value those who give up their own time to be heard. Also, decorum and respect must be demonstrated from the dais. When they are looking at their phones, rolling their eyes, smirking, et cetera, this does not go unnoticed, and as leaders, you set the standard. I challenge you, our elected officials, to set the bar high and allow the people a chance to follow. Respect is earned, not given." And in these conversations, I'm reminded of something I heard a long time ago. You know, with the first link, the chain is formed. The first speech censored, the first thought denied, the first time any man's freedoms are trodden upon, we are all changed irrevocably. So, you know, Ward Five, I'll commit myself to ensuring that you're heard from this point, you know, forever, as long as I can handle it, and I'm sure that the rest of the council agrees with that same opinion, that your voices are important, and that we are listening, and that we want you to be able to express your concerns and your grievances in a public forum, whether it's good or bad. We all have dirty laundry, we're not ashamed of it. And that's my only announcement for this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ward Four, Norman. I hope everybody had a great Indigenous Peoples' Day yesterday. I spent the day looking at a transcript article from the 30th of September talking about the public perception of the Native vote and public perception around tribal sovereignty, and I thought it was interesting, and even looked up how they're growing their voting base and engaging their voters by encouraging voting plans. So with that in mind, there is a Human Rights Award, and the deadline for it is October 18th. Nominations are due by 5:00 PM, you can go to the city website. Criteria taken into consideration in award selection includes achievement, successes, results, and impact, efforts including personal risks taken, time expended, sacrifices made in years of service, and leadership. Leadership is defined as inspiration or motivation given cooperation fostered, organizations or programs created, examples set, and innovations undertaken. The nomination letters can be emailed or mailed, visit our city website to get the links also to the Human Rights Nomination Form and view the Human Rights Award criteria. I also wanted to give a shout out to the organizers of Monarchs in the Park, that was a really well-attended event and gave me a lot of joy to see those kids fly in the butterfly kites in the park. And then we also have art walk this Friday, and I hope to see people out and about. I expect, since we don't have an out-of-town game or any games, that it should be a well-attended art walk. And also, I'll reiterate, the Transit Setter ribbon cutting, as Councilmember Holman mentioned, and then AIM Norman, as the other council members have mentioned. But some of the polling questions might be about affordable housing, so if you have some thoughts about that, or how lack of access to affordable housing is affecting you, by all means, get on aimnorman.org and let us know. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Good evening, Norman, Oklahoma, and Ward Three. Just a few things to make note of. The first item is to mark on your calendar the Electronics Waste Collection Event, which is happening Saturday, October 28th, at Reeves Park, from 9:00 to noon. If you've not signed up for Norman News, it's a great way to get information about things happening in the city, events, street closures, those types of things, and you can sign up In addition, there's a lot of stuff you can find on the city's information, such as the Police Department's monthly overview, and it has a lot of good statistical information, such as increases and decreases in crimes that are reported. A couple to make note on the August report, motor vehicle theft year to date was 27 compared to the five-year average of 42. Vandalism year to date was 65 compared to the five-year average of 91. Larceny and theft year to date was 177 compared to the five-year average of 232. And conversely, a couple of items that went, that increased just a bit, public intoxication year to date was 47 compared to the five-year average of 45. Fraud and forgery was 75 compared to 74. And so, that report is out every month, and it takes the department just a little bit of time to collect their monthly data, just similarly as it would take somebody like me to a few, about a week or so to prepare the month-end close for financial statements. So just give them a little bit of time. And a quote that I would like to share, "It's not things that upset us, it is our judgment about things," and that is Epictetus. He was a slave way back in the early 100s. And so, with that, thank you all for being here, and those watching online, glad you are here with us.
Councilmember?
Yes, I would like to invite everybody to our committee, our Oversight Committee, which happens every second Thursday, so that'll be this week, Thursday, October 12th. In Oversight, we talk about, we get an update from our emergencies, emergency, wow, I can't speak tonight, our emergency shelter, so we get that every month in Oversight, and then we will be talking about an update to boards and commissions this month as well. So if you are interested in either of those topics, we have them here in City Hall the second Tuesday of every month at 4:00 PM. That's the only announcement I have today.
Okay, this weekend will be the Norman Weather Festival at the National, or the National Weather Center. It will be Saturday morning from 10:00 to 2:00. They will also be having a breakfast on Friday from 7:30 to 9:00. You do have to register for the breakfast, but if you go to ou.edu/NWC, National Weather Center, you can find the link there. To piggyback on the bus route change that Councilmember Holman talked about, it's sort of affected my ward quite a bit. We're losing quite a few stops on Biloxi. We were pushing to try to get a stop at the East Side Library, we were trying to get a stop at the Walmart Neighborhood Market, which were all priorities of the citizens. We didn't get either of those stops, and like I said, we're losing three or four stops on Biloxi. I drove by there this morning and saw 14 people at 8:00 at the three different stops that I drove by, so it's going to be affecting quite a few of you. So if, if you are affected, I encourage you to write the rest of the council, call, get up here and tell them how much those stops mean to you. I know it's too late to change it right now, but, you know, I'm fighting to get them back. And lastly, the events that transpired this weekend in the Middle East and that are ongoing right now, we live in a very diverse community here, Norman. That's why I moved here. I grew up believing that America was a melting pot of all kinds of, all different cultures, religions, ethnicities, and when I came to Norman, Norman was the place in Oklahoma where that was a reality. You go to OU, and there's people from all walks of life. I've been fortunate enough to have been invited to our mosque here. I've gone to numerous religious ceremonies of all different faiths, and the people here in Norman were all Americans. But with everything going on right now, there are safety issues. There are terrorism, there are terrorists in our state and in our country right now. So I just sat down with Chief Foster before we came over here. Norman Police Department, we do have a seat on the Joint Terrorism Task Force Board, so they are monitoring everything they can, as closely as they can. And we went over a few of our SOPs, action plans for different types of emergency hostage situations, bombings, all that, and I walked out there feeling a whole lot better than when I walked in, because I know that these men and women who protect us, they're doing a great job. Some things that we do need to do, though, we need to update our emergency operation plan. It's a little out of date, and when we get our new emergency operations center, I think the city should strongly look at hiring an emergency management coordinator. Right now, we have an amazing individual doing it, he's under the Fire Department, but somebody that can actually come in, and that's their sole job. I think that's something that we need to look at. So, but overall, if you see something, say something, and just stay safe, and, you know, just remember, we're all Americans here. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. I have nothing. Next item on the agenda is a consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 2 through Item 14, the Consent Docket. I'll entertain a motion to place Items 2 through 14 on the Consent Docket.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to place Items 2 through 14 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items 2 through 14 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to recognize, Bree Montoya, excuse me, to make a statement.
I might have this memorized before my term is over, or this year's over. All right. Item four is a First Reading Ordinance for a rezoning requested by G2 SOK Investments LLC. The City of Norman Ethics Ordinance directs council members to recuse on items in which they have an actual conflict of interest or a pecuniary interest to or to disclose a possible conflict of interest on a particular item to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest. I have consulted with the City Attorney's Office on this matter, and while I do not have a pecuniary interest that may vary with the outcome of council's decision on this item, it is possible that a conflict of interest could be perceived due to my firm providing accounting and tax services for GSSOK Investments LLC. At this time, I want to firmly state that I intend to cast my vote on these items, but I will not incur a benefit, detriment, or a financial consequence regardless of my vote.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. As long as I can make it.
Have been cast, and the motion to approve Items 2 through 14 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Mayor. Diana Hutzel?
Good evening, good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward Five. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I don't have the solution, but part of solving a problem is that involves identifying the issues. I'd like to share my concerns regarding a segment of Norman's unhoused community whose homelessness will likely not be reduced through the Housing First Initiative. I'm referring to the unhoused with criminal records. Public Housing and Housing Choice Voucher, the two primary programs facilitate, to facilitate permanent housing for those suffering homelessness. Both HUD-funded, both stipulate that you cannot be a registered sex offender, both also stipulate that the applicant cannot have engaged in criminal activity within three or five years or drug-related activity within a year, depending upon the housing program. Norman Police Department Arrest Summaries from June 1st to October 5th included the names of 323 unhoused individuals charged with various criminal offenses. Based upon Oklahoma State Court Network records, 224 of these individuals, 69% have existing records or pending criminal charges that likely make them ineligible for these HUD-funded housing support programs. Combined, these 224 individuals have a history of 489 prior felonies, 799 prior misdemeanors, and 82 victim protective orders. They also have 66 pending felony charges and 105 pending misdemeanor charges. 64% have documented criminal activities spanning two or more counties, 26% across three or more counties. More than a few have indications of out-of-state criminal activity. 20% of the pending felony and misdemeanor charges did not originate in Cleveland County. Over the last 19 weeks, I've noted a cumulative average of 17 new names per week on Norman PD arrest summaries. Summaries released just yesterday include another eight names previously not seen before. Those are not factored into what I've shared with you tonight. The data makes it extremely difficult for many to accept claims that Norman's unhoused are all Normanites. Lastly, I have a 17-page document I'd like to give to council. It's a list of the 836 criminal offenses documented, I'm sorry, by the Norman PD from June 1st to October 5th where the arrestee was an unhoused individual. It includes, among other things, the arrest date, case number, arrest location, and offense, all publicly available data. Because it's challenging to understand the impacts of these offenses on our community, based solely upon a physical address, I've taken the time to identify the names of the businesses, schools, apartments, complexes, churches, parks, et cetera, associated with each arrest location. I've also identified commercial versus residential intersections and addresses that represent single-family homes. What isn't included on this list tragically, though, are the offenses committed by the unhoused upon their fellow vulnerable unhoused, which tragically, more often than not, goes unreported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry. Riley Worley? Richard Baxter?
I'm sorry.
I distracted her, Baxter, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me restart you.
How much time I get?
You got three minutes, sir.
Three minutes, okay. My name is Baxter, I've been up here once before, I'm the founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. Skunk is our logo. I want to open up with another lame dad joke. So, why, how does the skunk know when or who to spray when it's stinking, who not to spray? No way, you're not going to say anything? This is interactive. It's a joke. It uses instincts. Okay, that's, all right. Let's stick to the community work, stand-up's not working out. So, like Representative Ball was talking about, there's a lot of terrorism and a lot of hatred in the world, and my organization is poised to, you know, fuse people together and bring a light to positivity and bring different cultures together. We're hosting our first and- Norman Police Department Arrest Sumories from June 1st to October 5th included the names of 323 unhoused individuals charged with various criminal offenses. Based upon Oklahoma State Court Network records, 224 of these individuals, 69% have existing records or pending criminal charges that likely make them ineligible for these HUD-funded housing support programs. Combined, these 224 individuals have a history of 489 prior felonies, 799 prior misdemeanors, and 82 victim protective orders. They also have 66 pending felony charges and 105 pending misdemeanor charges. 64% have documented criminal activities spanning two or more counties, 26% across three or more counties. More than a few have indications of out-of-state criminal activity. 20% of the pending felony and misdemeanor charges did not originate in Cleveland County. Over the last 19 weeks, I've noted a cumulative average of 17 new names per week on Norman PD arrest summaries. Sumories released just yesterday include another eight names previously not seen before. Those are not factored into what I've shared with you tonight. The data makes it extremely difficult for many to accept claims that Norman's unhoused are all Normanites. Lastly, I have a 17-page document I'd like to give to council. It's a list of the 836 criminal offenses committed by, documented, I'm sorry, by the Norman PD from June 1st to October 5th where the arrestee was an unhoused individual. It includes, among other things, the arrest date, case number, arrest location, and offense, all publicly available data. Because it's challenging to understand the impacts of these offenses on our community based solely upon a physical address, I've taken the time to identify the names of the businesses, schools, apartments, complexes, churches, parks, et cetera, associated with each arrest location. I've also identified commercial versus residential intersections and addresses that represent single-family homes. What isn't included on this list tragically though, are the offenses committed by the unhoused upon their fellow vulnerable unhoused, which tragically, more often than not, goes unreported. Thank you for your time.
Sorry.
Let me restart you.
How much time I get?
You got three minutes, sir.
Three minutes. Okay. My name is Baxter. Been up here once before. I'm the founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. Skunk is our logo. I want to open up with another lame dad joke. So why, how does the skunk know when or who to spray when it's stinking, who not to spray? No way can I, y'all not gonna say anything? This is interactive. It's a joke. It uses instincts. Okay, that's, all right. Let's stick to the community work. Stand-up's not working out. So like Representative Ball was talking about, there's a lot of terrorism and a lot of hatred in the world. And my organization is poised to, you know, fuse people together and bring a light to positivity and bring different cultures together. We're hosting our first annual Norman's Race Against Racism, November 4th. It's going to be at Andrews Park. I like to call him Big H. Mayor Larry, he gave me the route because I didn't have the route down right, but he gave me the route. And he's also going to be a guest speaker. Clap that up, please. Clap it up, clap it up. He's going to be a guest speaker. We have a representative from the Police Department as a guest speaker, speaking about community policing, what's currently being implemented and what they plan to do in the future. And I have a meeting with the diversity captain at OU, Dr. Hippolyte, and she may be a potential guest speaker, fingers crossed. I'm meeting with her on next Wednesday. I want to just give some quick shout-outs. Guest Room Records, they've already committed to donating. People I'm listing have donated or are committing to donate and give. Hayday Entertainment, Sooner Bowling Center, Get Air, Trampoline Park, Visit Norman is donating and put us on the website. Freddy's Burgers, Planet Fitness, The Winston. Get the duck wings if you go there. Tell them I sent you. Play Pit, Sam Noble Museum, The Baked Bear, OK Runner, and Chuck E. Cheese. And so the community is getting involved. We're bringing people together. We're showing that we're stronger together, no matter what culture, race, religion, or anything. We're human beings. Like Representative Ball said, that we're all Americans here and we got to unite. And so that's what it's about. And I'm inviting everybody. I have some flyers here. And you guys meet me, I'll be in the back there. Any question? Do I take questions here or no? Okay. I'll take questions out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 8:00 AM.
Oh.
I told you it was questions. 8:00 AM, September, oh, excuse me.
Evan.
Thank you, council, mayor, staff, audience. My name is Evan Dunn. I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue in Ward 7. And I kind of want to continue the flow with what Councilman Ball and the gentleman before me were talking about. The issues seem to be about who's giving reverence and veneration to what idea. Right there behind you, it says, "In God we trust." God is the biggest idea that we can conceive. Are you speaking for me? Because I would like to define God. If we're trying to build an inclusive community, we need to have a, maybe a couple apostrophes on there. Because God can be a lot of different things to the 8 billion-plus people on this planet. Let's give them the freedom to say, hm, I'm going to come to Norman and I'm going to go define God however I want to because they put a couple apostrophes. They're not going to force us into denominations that become silos for hate. There's a great Frank Sinatra song that goes, "That's life, funny as it seems. Some people get their kicks stomping on other people's dreams. That's life." Well, what could life be with just a couple apostrophes on God? Maybe it would change people's perceptions and rearrange the way that we solve problems. Who knows? That's what life could be. That's what a fully-integrated society could become when we're fighting racism, when we're observing the fact that every religious faith, you know, the people who started Christianity, the people who started Islam, the people who were the earliest Hindus, the Plains Indians, who had all these different explanations for how to solve the problems of human animals living in bigger and bigger and bigger groups. There's no, no faith is completely true. They didn't know about the size of the world. They didn't know about the atomic theory. They didn't know about electromagnetism. We've got to be intellectually honest about that. Thanks for listening. I can't think of a bigger, more important topic than for us to really get to the bottom of how we can create a unified society. And it starts with ourselves. We've got to be emotionally aware.
Good evening, council and citizens of Norman. I'm Cheryl Ann Denso and I have property in Ward 4 and 6. And I would just like to give you guys the first rule of communication, which I learned at the University of Oklahoma, getting my degree in communication. And the number one rule is you cannot not communicate. Even silence is telling. And nonverbal speak volumes. For instance, if your loved one, spouse, partner at home, whomever, is all of a sudden not speaking to you for a period of time, however long that is, what does that tell It speaks volumes, does it not? So that's the first rule of communication. I implore the council and all citizens to learn, to listen with a much open mind. I also want to encourage the citizenry of Norman to contact the ACLU at www.aclu.org or their phone number is 212-549-2500. Or the State Attorney General's Office at www.ohag-ok.gob. Phone number for the one in office in Oklahoma City is 405-521-3921. Any citizen who feels like their rights are being violated can contact these offices and get advice on how to handle these situations. And finally, I'd like to thank the County Sheriff's Department to picking up the slack that was created by council regarding the SROs in this city. They have put service resource officers in our elementary schools and have picked up the slack because citizens need our particularly children safe, our community safe. And I don't like it when things are being kicked down the road. Thank you for listening.
Council, mayor, Carlinda Gravel, Ward 4. I'd like to start off by telling you a little something about myself. So I have two daughters and I raise them to be honest. Honesty is the most important thing they can have. If they do not tell the truth, no one will ever trust them, or me, or anyone. How can you trust anyone if they periodically lie? You never know when they're lying and when they're not. Honesty is very, very, very important to me. So over the past several months, it's actually going on a year now, I can't believe it's been that long, since things started to change in my neighborhood. And not long after I had an intruder, a very prominent member of the city of Norman, who's been a prominent member for generations, reached out to me and said, "You may try speaking with your council member. Maybe that person can help you." Because I thought, no one knows. No one knows what's happening in my neighborhood and on my streets. No one knows. And then I soon learned that there were topics about this issue that were taboo. You couldn't even talk about it. You couldn't even bring awareness. You couldn't even tell anybody if anybody did anything to you because you couldn't talk about it without being bashed. So as I began to try to share factual, honest information, I began to realize these topics were taboo. So I didn't know we couldn't talk about these things. I didn't know that if someone had a different opinion about solutions on certain issues in the city of Norman, mainly the homeless issue, you weren't allowed to say that. You weren't allowed to say anything different than what was already being moved and passed around. So I apologize that I didn't know. I apologize there were things that I couldn't say up here at these meetings. I apologize there were things that I couldn't say in the public that were happening to me or to my neighbors or to the children or to the seniors in my community. I didn't know we weren't allowed to tell those things, that those were hush-hush. I can tell you that as some of the things that have been coming to light lately, there have been people that have been sharing possible solutions with me. I'm really excited about that. People who have been victimized have been reaching out saying, hey, this happened to me. Someone else said, hey, could we try this? Hey, has anybody thought of that? Hey, what about that? Let's talk about it. I'm really excited that we're able to talk about it now. And I look forward during the next council meetings to be sharing some of those suggested solutions with you. Thank you.
That's all. All right. Council, we are adjourned.